I now call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. The first item on the agenda, oh, is to note attendance. We have all members present. Owen is virtual. Derek is missing, though he told me that he would be gone. He's out of town. So there are six out of seven of us here. We have a quorum. Next, we're going to move on to the agenda review. We'll take a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as published. Let's vote.
Phil?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Josh?
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right, so we have had some busy community members working on the qualities and qualifications for interim superintendent. And we're going to open the hearing right now to hear input from the public. We're going to start with the results of what already has been done. And the reason why we do this is because we do have a policy, and we could just use that policy, but going through this public input process and having a hearing allows us to customize the list for this time right now. And so that's why we are going through this process. And so I would love for our community members, Melissa Seifer-Briggs, Adam Kinsey, and Kevin Palmer, to come on up and share the work that they've been doing with us. Hello, and thank you.
Hello. All right. Well, we'll kind of get right into things. We had a good evening last Wednesday, right here in the high school library, and about 35 attendees, with another 30 or so online to listen in, and as a result of 276 survey responses, from the survey that was sent out via Parent Square, put all over social media, and the district website. I started off by reviewing the agenda, and we do have the PowerPoint up there, and talked a little bit about the process and timeline that you all had set forth. So I just kind of went over those dates and what was going to be happening, emphasized that we were there that night to talk about qualities and qualifications only, and only for the interim superintendent position. Could the interim superintendent become the permanent superintendent? Maybe so. But our focus was on the interim that night. And that we were looking forward, not back. That was an important part of our meeting, I think, and the tone that we wanted to see, and that was all the way through the night. Everybody was awesome in that regard. We weren't there to necessarily rehash anything but to move forward in a kind and positive manner, and that's what happened. And that we were going to need to be very flexible on the evening, and that turned out to be the case as well. We started into our survey by looking at the breakdown of respondents, mostly parents, some teachers and staff, students, community members with possibly no ties to the district, and other, maybe people that served multiple roles. You know, parent, teacher, and staff member, all in one. So then, we handed the evening off to Melissa to get into the survey, which that's what we'll do right now.
Yeah, so the first question on the survey had to do with the qualifications that are in our policy, so there wasn't a lot to talk about here. These are pretty basic qualifications, so we just talked. Here they are. The second question was also based on policy, but this is the professional qualities, personal and professional qualities of the individual. So the question asked to rank the nine, I think it's nine, that are in our current policy. So that's, you can see how it came out in the ranking. And then this is the top five from our current policy. We talked about that. The next question, we wanted to give some other ideas of other language and other concepts, personal and professional qualities that we could bring to this search. So we looked at other districts and what other districts are posting, large districts, small districts, all over the state, took those and asked the community to rank those as well. And these are the top five from that ranking. And you'll see from that, the previous slide, that the school finance piece was by far the clear winner. Then the next thing, the last question on the survey was more open-ended. So it said, "What else would you like to see in the personal and professional qualities?" And with 276 survey responses, you can imagine there were 276 different phrases, different words used. So we went through all 276 responses and pulled out themes. What was that comment about? What was the key word? And then we took the top 10 of those themes. So this is the top 10 themes that everyone in the community that took the survey was concerned with. Again, finance and budgeting was number one. Some of these are pretty straightforward. Some of them were a little more nuanced, because the term may have been used in different ways. So we talked about that next. So communication, there was a lot to communication. A lot of it had to do with kind of an open communication between staff and the district admin and the board, kind of keeping lines of communication open. Things about communication with the parents and the community, that they'd like to see more of that. And then specifics about how the candidate would express themselves. So being able to speak clearly and confidently and make decisions and explain the decisions. A lot of talk about transparency in this, that good communication is the key to transparency. And then a lot about interpersonal skills, that they want this person to be approachable and be a good listener, and someone that can be the face of the community, that we can talk to. The next thing that was a theme that was a little two-sided, I guess, was staff involvement and appreciation. So the community wants this interim to spend time in the classrooms and see what the staff is doing, and support them, support the teachers and the staff in the classrooms, be that, going kind of back to the communication as well, listening to the staff and being there and being a support for staff. Including staffing decision-making was key, that we really wanted to see. And then trusting teachers to be the educational experts. And collaboration was a word that came up a lot in the survey. And then the third theme that was a little dual-sided was community. So this had to do with, they want to see someone involved in Silver Falls, invested in Silver Falls, available to us out there at our events, our sporting events and our robotics events, and all these different things. They want someone invested. And it was two-sided, because some people thought that that needed to be, we need to find an interim that is in Silverton now. But then there were also just as many comments, "We do not need anyone that's from Silverton now. We need someone to come in and help us fix this problem that we're having." So that was two-sided. A lot of talk about understanding our district and our history, both positive and negative. And same thing with rural schools. Rural schools came up a lot, but it was two-sided, positives and negatives. But the key, I think, there was, it would be nice if this person could have some experience with rural schools. And then, I think I talked a little bit about that currently in the district was not really preferred for most people, but it would be nice if, once they were hired, they could be in the district and invested with us, was kind of the overall takeaway. So then, we took those top five originally from question, the first question, that were in our current policy, the one through five up there, and then the next five that were taken from the other district postings, those top five, and put them together. And then we asked the community members that were in the room to do some work for us.
Okay, so I'll speak to Wednesday night's activity, where the community came together, and we really had two outcomes that we were seeking. The one was to take this list, like Melissa said, with the five top themes from our district policy, five from other districts, and then to take the other themes that were mentioned in the comments, that were distilled out, and to merge the two and make sure that everything was covered. That was really our first task, make sure we didn't leave out a theme. And then we went to less is more and started to reduce. And we found, if you look here, for example, number seven, number eight, number nine, all say integrity. And several of these mention community. So we started to reduce and combine, you know, this one can be combined with that one. And then we found some themes were missing, so we actively wordsmithed. This was, as you imagine, quite an interesting process with 35 people. We underestimated the time that, coming in, that we thought it would take, but we got through it. And as a community, I think the second outcome was alignment. I think everyone came away with, one, there were a lot of voices that were heard; two, a lot of people came away feeling heard and had a chance to be part of the process. So I think you'll see when Kevin goes over the six resulting statements, that we did a good job reducing it, simplifying it, and we want you to understand, less is more. When you see words like "community," we mean the whole community. When you see "students," we mean all students, right? So we didn't add too many qualifiers to those statements, because, again, less is more. So when you read that, also behind it is this whole survey results. So with that, we came out of it with, pretty thankful for the result. I'll pass it on to Kevin.
Thanks, Adam. All right. You see on screen, those are our six recommendations. I'll go through those, I'll read them. First, a servant leader who is emotionally intelligent and equity-centered, and puts students at the heart of everything we do. Demonstrates integrity with a history of bringing people together, building morale and trust, and is aligned with the core values of the Silver Falls community. Third, understands school finance, demonstrates sound fiscal management, and strong budgeting skills with accountability. Next, practices transparent communication with a collaborative decision-making process, utilizing diverse perspectives to resolve conflict. Ability to engage and draw a community together by communicating effectively, both orally and in writing. And finally, builds effective collaborative team with varied areas of expertise. We came to these and ordered them this way with the sticky dots up on the chart paper. Some felt, you know, really it doesn't matter what order they're in, but we did that. We wanted to go through and see which kind of rose to the top. But I think there is some importance to what you see first on the top of the list. So again, guys, these are really the qualities that we want in the person. The four qualifications, the master's degree, the license, you know, those are pretty untouched. We really didn't address those. These are the person that we would like to see. And I want to thank Melissa and Adam. Everybody that was, there's a lot of people in the room right now behind us that were there Wednesday night. Three board members were there. And it was just a good, solid evening. I wish I had not told everybody, we'd be out by eight at the time. But like Adam said, you know, out at nine on the nose was pretty good. We were happy with it, especially distilling these down like we did. So kudos to everybody that was a part of this for doing some good work and hanging in there Wednesday night. Any questions?
I just want to express appreciation. I think it's amazing that you did do it in two hours. So thank you for being flexible and being able to stick with your process, because that's no small task to get that distilled. And appreciate Tom and Phil and Owen for also being there, and the community members for participating. This is a really great list, and customized for this time, and so I really appreciate having these. Other questions, comments?
No, just thanks for doing that. There was a lot there. I was there. I had to dip out a little bit early, but you boiled it down, it's less is more, which is, well done. Thank you.
Yeah, my sincerest thanks to all three of you. I can't thank you enough for all the hard work. I mean, taking all of the different qualities and, you know, qualifications, and taking all the input and boiling it down and ranking it, and getting it all done in two hours. I mean, that speaks to your leadership, so huge thanks to you three for the time you put into that. This is extremely valuable to our process.
You're welcome. Very welcome. Thank you.
And the fact that you did on short notice, and you volunteered. Your fee was very reasonable. We really, really, really appreciate that.
Jennifer, Owen has his hand raised.
Okay, Owen.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Melissa, and Adam, and to Kevin. It was clearly a difficult process. I mean, that fact became clear right away, and they handled it really well, and came out with a really usable product for us. And so I really appreciate that. Good work.
Thanks.
All right. So thank you very much, and we hope to, that this is either the final project or the basis of the final product that we use tonight, or that we agree upon tonight. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are we able to keep that list up there from the...
I can. If you would like me to share the screen of what the six recommendations are, I can do that?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so right now, we are going to have public comments specifically on the qualities and qualifications. So the list should be up shortly. If you have something that you think is totally absent from this list, that's when we want to hear from you, so that we can consider amending this if necessary. We also have to add qualifications, which we do have qualifications on our policy, and there are four. I'm just going to read those right now, just so that everybody is really clear on those. So number one, a current license that qualifies the individual to serve as superintendent of the district. Two, a master's degree or higher in the field of education, preferably in educational administration. Three, successful teaching experience at the elementary or secondary school level. Four, service as a superintendent, administrative experience in the central administration of a school system, and/or demonstrated history of success as an educational leader. So we will have to decide whether we're just going to keep those four straight from our policy, or if we make any amendments on that. So I'll start by opening it up to anybody in the room, if you'd like to add any ideas that maybe are not captured on these six qualities and qualities, well, they're just qualities, that the team has already presented. Ray?
Do I know three minutes?
Yeah, and so we will just do the normal three minutes, and I'm assuming that you're speaking on this topic, so you don't have to say that.
Ray Kaiser, resident, former Silverton Elementary School Board member, a retired SHS science teacher, a member of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, the Bond Advisory Committee, and the Selection Committee for the previous superintendent. I don't intend to disparage or belittle the work of the group that's done. I was here last week and thought that was a really good process. A couple of words, well, and the list of adjectives and nouns that you have before you are, what's the word? Well, it's a superb list, and so just a general comment is that it might be one in a million purse people that meets all of those criteria. So I'm sure you realize that you're not going to be able to match that list 100 percent. A couple of words, I think they might have been mentioned last Wednesday, but that come to my mind, and those words are humor and humility, both. And so I would just throw those out to you. I would suggest that the character of the individual that we seek and look for has both of those characteristics. And maybe a bit of humility here tonight, or humbleness, or humor, I don't know. But to me, metaphors are extremely important. And so, you know, just thinking about this the last few days, and we're all familiar with the 20-mule team that pulled a wagon of borax across the desert. That's an old advertisement from when I was a kid, I think. A super metaphor for teamwork, and what I had the most fun with was trying to summarize that, and so, mules must agree to work together. All right? And then a second one. The word "iditarod," that most of us are familiar with, means a distant place. And so the Iditarod sled race, you know, it's tough, in my mind, it's tough enough that it's not necessary to win. The best part of that is that you finish, okay? And so, kind of a summary on that metaphor would be, the musher cannot finish the race without teamwork, and that includes lots of yips and yaps. All right? And then, in a more serious vein, we're all familiar with the Apollo 13 mission. And so that one is, you know, Houston, we have a problem. And from 100,000 miles away came the message, "You'll have to continue." And I'm making this message, but it describes the experience. Houston is potentially replying, says, "You know, you will have to continue to the moon and go around it before you can come back." So I don't have a summary statement for that one. But I'd like to add, in addition, you may have thought about this, if possible, I'd like to suggest that the board consider advertising for an interim superintendent, but that consideration be given to making that a continuing position. It seems to me that the current issues of SFD might be better served by a person whose expectations are for the long term, as well as for the immediate situation. And I would also suggest that the board work with a committee of district individuals to assist in the review of candidates. I think Kevin, Melissa, and Adam would be excellent candidates for such a committee. And additional community involvement would be important and provided in this case. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anybody online who would like to speak? Anybody else in the room?
Good evening. Gene Feifer, and I was 25 years on the Budget Committee, most of the time the chairman, and the chairman of the High School Relocation in '93 and '99. And so I was at the meeting on Wednesday night, and I had a statement that I made, and they said, "Bring it up here to the board." So here I am, and it'll be very brief. Faced with the possibility of 16 percent cuts in spendable revenues next year, we should be really conservative on what we're doing with the fund. So my recommendation is that you don't hire, or if there's a replacement, we don't have an assistant superintendent. And I think you also should consider if there's people that retire from school principals, that we don't have assistant principals. We need to cut back wherever we can, because we don't know what's going to happen. It's an extreme problem. And I think, I don't know Dr. Joe, but we're going to be investing a lot of time in initiating him in our system, and if he's doing a good job, we should try to keep him. That's all I got.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Online? Would anybody else in the audience like to come speak about the qualities and qualifications? All right, then it's time for the board to talk about changing our, editing our lists and then adding the qualifications. Dan, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I think to close the hearing, and then the order that we have is for COSA to present, but if you would rather, with only one comment, if you want to, I think you can adjust and adopt those. COSA's online ready.
Okay. So how about we, if COSA's ready, we can just close the hearing, go on to hear from COSA, and then we'll have our discussion after that. Does that work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's bring on COSA then.
Daniel, can you promote COSA to be panelist?
And just so everybody knows, COSA stands for Confederation of Oregon School Administrators, and they are helping us out with our search process, because we are trying to do it as economically as possible, and that's one of the reasons why Kevin and Melissa and Adam also did that piece for us, because generally, districts pay people to facilitate those kinds of things, and we are trying not to do that. So that's what we are trying to put together tonight. All right, hello, Krista.
Good evening, everyone.
How are you? Can you hear us okay?
Yep, can you hear me okay?
We can. And is...
I've got a lot of the crazy sunlight coming through the backside here, so I'm trying to get myself angled a little differently.
So Krista, thank you for coming tonight to give the board kind of an overview of what COSA has to offer for the search process. We really appreciate you being available to us and caring about us enough to, you know, do this without a fee because of the situation we're in. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate it, and we are really happy to hear what you have to say tonight.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. So my name's Krista Parent, and I'm currently the Deputy Executive Director of COSA, and will be the Executive Director beginning July 1st. And so just to give you just a little bit, not to talk about myself, but just so you know that I know this world of superintendency. I did serve as a superintendent in Oregon in one district. I spent 33 years in the district, and the last 19 of those years I was a superintendent before I came to COSA six years ago. So we're not really in the superintendent search consultancy business, but we have found ourselves recently helping districts, especially districts like Silver Falls, that are in the need of an interim superintendent. And we feel like we're in a good position to do that, because we work with all the superintendents in the state of Oregon, sitting superintendents, retired superintendents, aspiring superintendents. And so we have a pretty good range of people that we're very familiar with and can vouch for in these interim situations. So like Jennifer said, you know, we aren't charging a fee. I don't know what firm you worked with last time around when you went out for a superintendent search, but those searches are not in... search, but those searches are not inexpensive these days. And so one of the things we feel like we can add to the mix is that we're a really good deal and a really good price. I will say that, you know, because of the shallow pool of potential superintendents, and because these are difficult circumstances that you're finding yourself in, as well as other districts, we're not in the position to do a really long, drawn-out process with, you know, lots of involvement and lots of different folks in the process. We really just come in and help the board get the position posted. We go out and recruit all the folks we know that would meet the qualifications and characteristics that you talked about tonight. We would then bring that slate of candidates back to all of you. We can help you with the interview questions, or giving you some sample interview questions and let you edit those. I've shared a couple of copies of that with Dan already. You know, we can be there at the interview virtually if you'd like us to, but we're not like a full-on search consultancy that's, you know, you would want to use if you were looking for a permanent superintendent. I will say that because we do superintendent contracts, both interim and permanent superintendent contracts, we are very adept and familiar with putting together interim contracts that do keep the door open for that person to become a permanent superintendent, if that turns out to be a good fit for both parties. And so we're very familiar with that. You know, we've done really big and really small districts, and so, you know, recently, we, about a month ago, we did the Eugene interim superintendent process, used the same kind of approach. We did Coos Bay back in December. We're just about finished with Eddyville School District, very small, 200 students. And so again, we did Salets Charter School as well, not too long ago. So we have a pretty good range in terms of the size and the kind of pool of people that we can pull from. Just to give you a little bit of context, just so you know, in five years' time, we've had 154 new superintendents in Oregon. That's out of 197. So if you're in your third or fourth or fifth year, you're kind of an experienced superintendent right now, you know, by most standards. You all probably know this, but the average tenure of a superintendent in this country, which is also true in Oregon, is just a hair under three years in one position. And so, you know, we don't have, the country as a whole doesn't have a good track record, and in these interim situations, unless you really have a pool of people that you can go to, that you have relationships with, it's hard to just put out a posting and hope for the best. So again, you know, I can answer any questions that you have. We have, COSA has the job posting site that, you know, virtually everybody posts all administrator positions, even teaching positions with. And so we get, you know, thousands of hits on our job posting site daily, and so you will get a lot of exposure if it's posted on our site. And you can do that whether or not we're working with you in the search process or not. There's a small fee if you just want to put your posting up there, but if you're working with us and we're helping you with the interim search process, we'll just post it and not charge you for that. You know, we do, I do, all the new superintendent programs, and so we have a first-year new superintendent academy, a second year, a third year. We also have an aspiring superintendent program. And you know, this is probably not a situation where you want somebody that's not been a superintendent, you know, given the, some of the challenges that you all are dealing with, and looking through that and listening to that list of qualifications. You know, you really need somebody that has done a, you know, a turnaround the block in terms of being an Oregon superintendent in particular, and that's definitely something that we can help you with. So I'll just stop there. I would like to say that, was it Melissa, Adam, and Kevin? That was impressive, that process that you did, and how you brought all that together. And it's like, I'd love to take the three of you on the road with me in these other communities that are trying to come up with their qualities and qualifications as well. So nice work, that was really impressive.
Go ahead, Josh.
Thank you, Krista. The only, well, I have two questions. It's about the pool that you currently have and the timeline. So we're looking to post tomorrow, depending on board action tonight, and then close it May 3rd. That's, so I think I was put at ease, understanding that you already have a pool you can pull from. If you didn't, I'd be very concerned that we would not have any great candidates in such a short time span to pull from. Can you help me out here?
Yeah, absolutely. And before I answer that question, I just wanted to let you know that Darren Drill's here with me, current superintendent in Jefferson School, or I'm sorry, in Cascade School District, and he's working with me on these interim search processes. And so it's nice to have a sitting superintendent in this process as well. So to be honest with you, we've already been out recruiting possibilities for Silver Falls School District. Whether you work with us or not, we're out looking for, before we saw your list tonight, and that's very consistent with what we've been out talking to people about, is recently retired superintendents, or soon-to-be retired superintendents that really know this work, especially in the area of, you know, Oregon school finance. So we have five or six people already interested and willing to talk further with you all about this position. You know, you've had Dr. Morlock in there assisting as well. I know that he's been talking to folks, too. Darren and I have both been out talking to folks, and so we have a group ready to go. When we did the Eugene School District interim position here a month ago, they posted it for five days. And again, you know, we had been talking to them and knowing that this was coming, and so we'd been putting a potential pool of applicants together as well. So I know it seems quick, but I'm just trying to give you a sense of urgency here, because you're not the only district currently, right as of this moment, looking for a good interim experienced superintendent. And because the pool's not very big, I wouldn't want you to belabor it very long, because, you know, you want to get in there and get the best of what's in the pool.
Krista, I have a question about the process, and I wanted to get your opinion on people that have brought forth, or we've even heard of, you know, you have an open process versus a kind of more closed process in terms of applicants. Open being, you know, everything is in open session, the candidates are open to the public. Closed being, you use executive session to conduct interviews, maybe with some limited community involvement, but in a more executive session-type fashion. Wanted to get your opinion on, is there a better method, one versus the other, pluses and minuses of each type of open versus closed system?
Right. I'll tell you, the problem with the open process is you won't get as good a pool of candidates, because folks, especially if they're current sitting superintendents, they don't want to burn the bridge of their current employer, and so they're not likely to throw their name in if it's going to be public like that. You get a much better pool of applicants if you can assure some confidentiality of the applicant process, at least up until, you know, the very final stages, maybe the last one or two people. When you, when you all, I'm assuming you will likely be engaging a search consultancy early next fall to begin the full-on superintendent search process for your permanent person. And in that case, then you would have many more opportunities for community involvement. You'd have some phase of the finalist process that's in open session and interacting with the community, for sure. But in this particular case, in this situation, I would not recommend that. I would recommend that the board, you might add, you know, the two or three, three people that you talked about tonight into that process, but I would highly recommend that it be an executive session. These are unique circumstances, and you need somebody that can come in, hit the ground running, and put you in a really good position next fall to get a solid pool of applicants for that permanent job.
Does that answer your question, Eric?
Yeah. I think Darren was going to add something to that, too. Darren?
Good evening, everybody. I apologize for being just a little bit late. Had superintendent duties tonight in our district. Again, I'm Darren Drill at Cascade, just south of you, and I wanted to work with Krista on this, mostly because I've been working with her, but also Craig Rossler, for those of you that remember in your district, was my mentor. And 16 years later, right, I'm still in this position, and Craig, Craig made, helped me tremendously get myself started. So I felt like I really wanted to help Krista do that. I wanted to say that just this last week, last Thursday, there was the regular superintendent's meeting of the tri-county area, which includes Marion County. And Silverton's situation popped up in that meeting amongst all the superintendents. And Krista's correct, and I'm sure you're listening clearly, but she, she has a list of very capable and qualified candidates that will work with her. And in that conversation at our meeting at the ESD, the question was, well, who would come to Silverton right now and really help? And I stayed quiet, because I knew that Krista had a list of some names that I think would be, some solutions for you that I think would be workable in your situation, and I think would put Silverton in a place where it could go out and find its permanent person in due time. So I just wanted to throw that out. That conversation is out there. I would even dare say that there are some people locally that I think would be interested in such a great school district that you guys have. So just wanted to throw that in for my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Other questions from board members about the process? I have one. We did talk about confidentiality. And so Krista, you think that if we had just a few community members in, on the interviews and the screening process with the board, that that, I guess my question is, would these candidates change their mind about throwing their hat in the ring if we added some, you know, a few community members to our screening and interview process?
I think that would work. I mean, what we would ask if we're going to work with you on this, is that those folks sign a, you know, an agreement that says that they're going to keep the candidates in confidence and not talk about it outside, which, you're going to do this in executive session, so that's a must anyway, right? We would have them sign something, which is typical in a search process, all folks on the interview committee do that. And the way that we normally do this is, I would come to an executive session, and I'd say, here are the candidates that we have for you. And I'd go through, and I would give you, you know, just a little summary about each candidate, what their previous superintendent experience has been, you know, how many years, what kind of their strengths and qualities are that line up with your list, and then hand that over to you all. And you can, you know, and I probably, if you want me to, some districts like this, they say, tell us, you know, in order who you would think the top three out of these candidates are, or the top five. And I could tell you, if it were me, here's the order I'd pick them in. And then I, then it's up to you. I hand those off to you. You go through your screening process and determine which of those candidates you'd like to interview. That would happen on one night. I guess you could do it on the same night, well, actually, that wouldn't work. I would do that on one night, and then obviously you're going to have to call those candidates for an interview, and then you'd set up the interviews for a few days out. Typically, we've been, in these processes, we've been doing that first interview virtual, just because there's usually a pretty quick turnaround, you know, you're trying to get them on a virtual interview within a couple days' time of making that decision. And then after that first interview, what's happened in these last four that we've done, there are usually, sometimes just one, but one to three candidates that emerge to the top immediately, and there's agreement like, hey, these are the people we want to see in person and have a deeper conversation with. Then you have a little more time, you set up those folks coming into your district and meeting an executive session in person.
That was actually part of my question, too. So you've answered it. We will have to handle the protocols and the organization for the screening and the interview process ourselves. So that's something that we expect to do.
Yeah, and at least when I talked to Dan and Joe last time, they thought that that would work okay, that, I mean, I can, I'll have the, I guess we need to talk about what you want them to submit in terms of an application. What we've typically been doing is their resume and a letter of interest, and we ask them to speak in the letter of interest to how their experiences and skills line up with the posted Q and Q that you've developed.
Okay.
And again, you know, it's, we may have a few folks that submit an application that Darren and I don't know, but not very likely unless they're from out of state. All the folks in Oregon, we're going to know, and know a lot about their work history. So we're going to be able to have, see that in the resume and the letter, as well as Darren and I add our experiences. I mean, between the two of us, you know, we have about 40 years of superintendent experience in Oregon, so.
And Krista, you mentioned, emphasized the Oregon piece in your introduction. In our situation, do you feel it is more important that we really consider Oregon candidates, and can you explain why you think that?
Absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up. Like in the Eugene search, they only considered Oregon candidates. And the one thing that we discussed with that board, that they would consider somebody that had been in Oregon, maybe went and spent a few years in a superintendacy in a neighboring state, and then, you know, were coming back, that they wouldn't rule that person out. But given the uniqueness of Oregon's state school funding formula, the Student Success Act, the High School Success Funds, all of those financial components are very unique in Oregon. There isn't another state that's, school funding structure looks like ours. And, you know, you can teach somebody that, but you all aren't in a position to have somebody learning this, right? You need somebody coming in knowing these things. And so that's an area of expertise that both Darren and I have, so we could support somebody that maybe needs a little shoring up, but I really think it would be best to look for somebody that has that experience and knows Oregon's system. The other thing, too, that you made me think of, Jennifer, is on your, I know this would be true probably of just about any school board's policies, but the qualification that says they have to have a master's degree or higher, just so you all know that in Oregon, in order to have an administrator's license that allows you to be a superintendent, you can't get an administrator's license unless you have a minimum of a master's degree.
I have a question about that, too, just in general. I know of one Oregon school district that has, well, I guess that's not true. Every Oregon school district, does every Oregon school district have a superintendent that has been a teacher before?
No, and it's rare that that's the case, but you do have a few folks that came to the work. I mean, Eugene School District is an example. This has been a few years ago, but George Russell was a longtime superintendent in Eugene, and he didn't come on the K-12 education side of things. He kind of came on an HR path. But that's very rare, and it's more difficult to get a license if you have that kind of alternative path. You can get an administrator's license if you haven't been a teacher, but you have to have a doctorate or something equivalent to a doctorate in the field of educational leadership or education administration to even be considered for that license. So I, I don't know, out of 197 right now, I don't know, Darren, I don't know that we have anybody that hasn't come up through the K-12 education side of things.
There are a couple of superintendents that I think came through the counseling process, right, but they were school counselors, not necessarily classroom teachers.
School psychs, yeah, school counselor.
School psych as well, yeah. But, but nobody that I can think of, and I think you're right, Krista, George was probably the last one that I could think of over the last 15 years.
Well, and the reason why I ask is, I know Salem Kaiser's superintendent wasn't a classroom teacher, has a degree in education, but wasn't a teacher. And when I first heard that, I was like, whoa, because I'm a teacher, and to me, that kind of matters, right? At the same time...
That's true.
Yeah. At the same time, you know, the... At the same time, you know, the financial chops, as Krista, you, you mentioned that, that word to me on the, on the phone, that matters too, you know? And so it's like, I, I, I struggle now to, I don't know, parse that out, having a CEO and a CFO that, I mean, I, I, I guess I'm, what I'm, I'm, I'm asking a bigger question that you can't even answer necessarily, but that's just been on my mind, the importance of the financial piece and the preparation for that, just seems super important for this position. And, but I'm assuming that, that everybody that we're going to get is probably going to be just somebody who's an experienced superintendent, who, who does have experience in that area. But I was just, I'm just throwing that out there for food for thought.
It's a really good point. And the people that we're going to serve up to you are going to meet your needs on both sides. They're going to have been a K-12 educator, likely a teacher, but like Darren said, maybe a counselor or a school psych in their early years. But they're going to have, you know, chops in the financial side. I mean, ideally, you have a superintendent that started out as a teacher and came through as an instructional person all the way through until they became a superintendent. And then they're coupled with a really good CFO that has chops on that side of the business, right? But I'll tell you, it's almost as hard to find a qualified CFO in school districts as it is a qualified superintendent right now. Those are both very difficult, hard to fill positions.
And if I may, I, I think sometimes, considering the situation, right, the CFO piece of it makes a lot of really good sense, sitting where you're sitting. But right behind that, that concept is somebody that can create good, positive relationships. Because there's going to be relationships that you're going to need to, to mend, relationships you're going to have to rebuild. And generally, your classroom teacher, counselor, school psych, somebody that's come up through the ranks, right? They should know the financial pieces of it. Obviously, you're going to, you're going to be there to make sure now that you've got people watching and paying attention. But that relationship piece for, for your staff and your community, I think is going to be just as important. If you go back 15 years with the WESD, way before Joe's time, right, there were, there was a huge situation at the ESD, and it was in the newspaper, the Statesman Journal, it was a 15-page article, right? And the previous superintendent to Joe, you know, his job was really not just about the finance, but it was also about the relationship.
Yep.
And, and they threaded that needle pretty well. So I hear you, Madam Chair. I understand that, that the financial part of it is there. But there are some pieces along the way that you can, you can manage and double check to ensure that that's going well. It'll allow you for some transparency. In the meantime, your, your new person can start to build relationships as well and get you through this situation as quickly and put you back where you rightfully are with such a great school district in Marion County and in the state.
Well, I think, I would say, I appreciate that. And I just wanted to underscore, too, how hard being a superintendent is, and that might be why it's so hard to, you know, get a, a deep pool of candidates. Because you really have to be very multifaceted in order to, you know, do a good job. And so I guess that's, this is a point I wanted to make, is that, that, that good superintendents aren't growing on trees. And we need to keep, keep in mind that it's a super hard job.
The other thing I was going to add in there, and I think you all know Jackie Olson, I think she did a presentation and has been in there helping on the financial side. I mean, she comes, she's a package with us. We work very closely with Jackie. Her office is, you know, two doors down from mine. We talk all the time, we work together. So whoever you end up with as the interim, whatever supports they need, you're going to get that from the COSA side and the OASBO side and together. So that's, that's just something I, even if you don't work with us on the search, that that is irrelevant. We're still going to be there to support whoever that person is.
Josh?
Hey, Krista, so I have a, at the danger of trying to think this out loud, trying to figure this out. Preferably, I would, you know, we're going to, I prefer not to do this process twice. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, the, the candidates that we have, are we allowed to ask, it'd probably be unwise to ask, but if any of them would consider going further or like, hey, I'm here just for the interim, and that's it, but also having the wisdom to not let that affect our decision-making in their interim skills that they currently have. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, should we, should we not? I don't want to rank that person particularly high, because I know that we're not going to have to go through this again, and this is a person that we do know. I guess, so you understand what I'm, I guess, asking?
Yeah, absolutely. And just so you know, in both Eugene and Eddyville, which are the two most recent, they had a question in the interview, that first round of interview, interviews, where they asked specifically, if this worked out for the district and for you as the candidate, would you be interested in a longer-term permanent situation? It's not likely that you're going to get a lot of those people, because those people would be current sitting superintendents, and they're not going to leave their current job to come take an, you know, risky, unsure interim position likely, unless they're just looking for a change. But, you know, in, in, at least with Eugene, we ended up getting, getting an interim in there that is going to finish this year, started a month ago, and is going to go all of next year until they get them through the permanent superintendent process. The person that I think we're going to get in Eddyville tomorrow night, it's an interim, but they're structuring the contract like I mentioned before, because that person is interested in being the permanent. And we put in the contract a date certain where the board and the interim will meet together and determine, is this a good match? And should we offer this person a permanent contract moving forward? So, you know, you might get lucky, you might find somebody like that. But because we're looking for somebody really experienced with the financial chops, you're probably not going to get a lot of current sitting superintendents in that pool. You're going to get retired folks that may give you, you know, maybe two years, but like, just, just one year.
Is, is there any disadvantage to having a question or anything like that, where we leave that door open? Is that any harm doing that?
No, not at all. I, absolutely. And I, and I get it. I mean, you don't want to be doing this every year. And, you know, if you got lucky and found somebody that was really interested in staying, and it worked out, great. You have the authority and ability to do that, and I definitely think you should put a question in like that. And even in our recruiting, because if you give us the green light, Darren and I are going to be on the phone tonight, on the phone tomorrow, talking to people. If we know that, that that's a possibility, then we will have a chance to recruit some other folks that may be looking for a, a new district, if they knew that that possibility was there, that you would consider them beyond a year. So that does help us in recruiting folks.
Josh, I'm, I'm glad you kind of brought that up, just because I was thinking the same kind of thing, that, you know, given, like you just said, Jennifer, that our, our pool may not be very deep. But we do find somebody who is a diamond in the rough, so to speak, that meets our qualifications and qualities that we've established now. But, you know, through the process, we go, maybe we identify somebody that could be a, a good long-term fit, highly unlikely. But I don't, I think as a board, we got to consider that, you know, going into it. I think anything right now is on the table, but even though we're looking for an interim spot, I think we'd be naive not to think that if we do find somebody who's really good, that they might be a long-term fit, that to not necessarily rule it out or ask that question in the interview. Because, you know, Josh, I was thinking the same thing.
And you know, you all have, go ahead.
My question is, how often, how often do the, does a two-year interim situation happen?
Well, the most recent one that I can think of was Eugene. And when Gus Valderas left, he's the superintendent in Beaverton now, when he left, they put an interim into that position, Sidney Van De Car. And then at the end of that year, they agreed to extend it for an additional year. So she ended up being the interim for two years. I don't know, Darren, can you think of another, more than one year? Well, the Eugene situation now will be about a 15-month interim.
I think a lot of times, it's a year or a year and a half. And a lot of times, it's like, finish up, kind of where you guys are. Finish up the year, let's go into the next year. It gives everybody a chance to breathe. It gives you an opportunity to run through a budget cycle. If there are difficult, right, if difficult decisions to make and staff wants to focus on that person, allows you to, if they, if they survive it and do a good job, and you guys feel like they've been transparent and they've worked hard to, to try to explain everything, great, keep them on. But if not, you can allow that, that frustration and anger with staff and others to go with that person, and allows you, in some ways, a cleaner slate for the next time around. But I, other than, other than who you just said, Krista, Gus, I don't, not for two years, year and a half, year and nine months, we've seen that before, even in our area. I know North Marion's, North Marion's going to go through that, I think, likely. And they're out to look, but they may, they may go longer than that as well. So we'll see.
The reason I ask is because I'm just conceptualizing, you know, Krista said, we'll, we would want to turn around in, in fall to start planning the permanent search. And if you hire a person who may be interested in it long-term, that just seems really early to be, I mean, it's like, do you, do you conduct the permanent search, knowing that the person that you have an interim may want to come fill that position? And you just have two parallel paths going on?
Yeah, and typically, what you would do, and the only reason I say you got to get going in the, you know, mid-fall, is you got to get out ahead of the rest of the districts. I mean, we have 32 districts right now seeking superintendents for the 24, 25 school year, and there are more coming. And those that are just getting started are way behind the game, right? And so what you would do about October, maybe November at the latest, is you'd put out a proposal to hire a search consultancy to come in and help lead you through this process. Then you'd have community forums, and you'd have all those kinds of things going on. While you have this interim in place, knowing that this interim may end up being your top candidate, but you still run that process, unless you're trying to, you know, save the money and not have to pay a search consultancy. And then you might be able to push it out a little further and, you know, go to like December or January. So by then, you'd have a pretty good sense of this is your person, the interim, and that you, you wouldn't have to go to that expense. But you don't want to go any later than January with full-on, you're ready to go with the search, or you will miss out.
And I know that Krista's saying a little bit like, you know, there's so many people going out and looking. But here's the reality, having been in the Mid Valley almost all my life, I know this seems difficult at the moment, but you're Silverton School District.
Right.
I mean, you got, you guys have been the, the, the place that all the rest of us in the Mid Valley, in the tri-county area, we have turned to watch and see what Silverton has done. I have numerous times trying to figure out how to match and figure out how to do curriculum, instruction, how it is you build relationships with community. And while this is difficult at the moment, right, your, your long-term reputation is stellar. There will be people that will sign up and will be interested in your position. It is an enviable place to be. You guys know that, and that's still not the change. Even though, even though this last Thursday, we heard, wow, that's going to be, that's going to be a rough one, I know there were people sitting around that table that thought about that, you know? Are they going to do an interim and then a, and then a, a long-term person? You could see current superintendents, I mean, that's a step up for, there's, there's a lot of people that do my job, that that's, Silverton School District is a step up for that place. I really believe you will find good quality candidates, whichever way you go here.
Yeah, I agree.
I want to personally thank you for that, Mr. Drill. That is good to hear, that we still are Silverton.
Dang straight, you are.
And we're.
I mean, I mean, you guys, you guys are going through the process, right? And all this stuff's coming out. At the same time, you're celebrating your, your basketball team. I mean, you on and on and on about the things that you do academically, athletically, community. I mean, 25 years ago, you stole our FFA guy, and he never left, right? I mean, it's one of those deals. I was fortunate enough a couple of years ago to get your athletic director. But the reality is, right, nine times out of 10, it goes the opposite direction, from North Marion, from Woodburn, from Cascade, from Staton, and even from Salem. That is the place you want to be.
Thank you so much. That means a lot. Krista, my, I guess my last question that I have for you guys is, do we have a, a basic understanding or reason why the, the tenure of the superintendence has dropped to a pretty low average of below three years? Like, I don't want you to necessarily, because it could be so multivariate, that we can't really pinpoint it. But do you have like a top two categories that's leading to this turnover across the state?
Yeah. And, you know, and across the country, too. And the, that statistic across the country has never been a lot better than three years. That's been pretty typical for a long time. But specifically to Oregon, you know, when we hit the pandemic and got a, a year into that or so, all those superintendents that could retire pretty much said, that's enough, I'm out, right? And then also, if you just looked at the age of that group of folks, it was just kind of like, you know, sort of like the baby boomer group, and they were hitting retirement at about the same time, so that contributed to it. And then, you know, not this board, but there are boards that have gotten a little wacky over these last few years. You know, the politics of, you know, the country have really kind of been brought to the school board level. I mean, school board positions are not supposed to be political, but they've become very political. And like, I think Jennifer said, you know, it's hard to be a superintendent. There's so many things that you're trying to do, and so many things you're trying to accomplish for kids. And when you have a board that is divided and at odds with one another, it makes the work just not very much fun. And so, you know, I think that those would be kind of my top two or three. Pandemic, the age of the group as a whole to begin with, and then just the politics that have entered into the school board arena and made things really difficult.
I think, I think for, really quickly, it's, it's sometimes a lack of communication or clarity from, from a board to the superintendent, but many times, it's the other way around.
Right.
Right? At the end of, every February, you know, again, I said, this is my 16th year at Cascade. I ask my board every February, are we going in the right direction? Because if not, you, let me help you, let me move on, so you can get somebody that makes the direction better, right? That makes more sense to you. And I think as you go through, you want to really look for somebody that is, that is transparent and that will be as honest as they can with you about where they sit. And, and Krista's got names. I mean, we, we, we know people, we've, we've connected with lots of people that have recently retired. And I just believe that there's that honest conversation, right? Sometimes you feel like you're dancing around it a little bit. And fortunately for me, I've got a couple, I've got a school board member, she's done it 38 years. She just looks at me and says, this isn't good enough, and this is. This is what I need from you. It provides great clarity for me. And then her next response to me is, I need clarity from you. Where are you? Right? And that has helped create and forge a relationship that when times get difficult, we stick, right? We stick to it. And I go back to what I said earlier, Silverton's an amazing community. This should be an opportunity for you guys to find somebody that allows that conversation to happen, in spite of what Krista just said, right? All that stuff's going to come. Probably the other piece of it is, is Oregon just does not support schools financially the way they should. And that is coming. COSA is working on it. And that will help make things better, I think, in the long run. But that clarity that you guys can provide, and I think it's a great opportunity. You can say, listen, we've just been through a, a very difficult ordeal. Let's get to brass tacks and get this figured out. I want to know where you stand on this. And when, when things are going well, then you say, things have gone well, we really appreciate what you've accomplished there. With those kinds of comments, I think lots of people that do this job stick, right? They feel like that's a very, very solid place they can be.
And you're talking to the two superintendents that have helped the average go up, but, you know, we both are people that, you know, I mean, I loved every single day of being a superintendent, even in the really challenging days. And, you know, that's the kind of person we want to find for you all, somebody that like, I, I want to dig in, and I want to be a part of this. And I think we can.
Any other questions for these superintendents? Owen, do you have anything? Okay. Well, I think we have gotten a lot of good information from you, Krista and Darren. Thank you so much for volunteering your time to be here and helping us clarify what we are thinking as we move forward. So just thank you so much, and we appreciate you, and appreciate all the. So just thank you so much, and we appreciate you and appreciate all the thought that has already gone into this, even though we haven't committed on our side yet. We, we just really appreciate you.
You bet. And our list of people, whatever way you go, we'll hand that list over. If you don't, if you work with someone else, that's not a problem for us. We just want you to get somebody good in there, so. Nice talking to you and meeting all of you, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. All right, so we now are at the point where we can talk about, well, do we need, do you feel like we need to talk anymore about COSA? Because it is gonna be an action item, we can talk about it again when it's an action item.
No, this, this calendar on here is what was gonna work for the COSA piece.
Except for it doesn't have any provision for any kind of community involvement past what's already been done. And we have heard from our, our experts that that's, you know, can be problematic to extend. You know, we probably don't want to extend our timeline at all. And so that's the concern that I have, is like, I know that we have folks who have said, you know, put some community members on there. I think that's fine, as long as it doesn't take us extra time. And then we, do we have an application process? Do we just appoint? That's where.
My, my suggestion here is, I think, without totally disregarding the, the input from others beyond the board, and Krista mentioned it too, and maybe if they're willing to have Kevin, Melissa, and Adam sit in and be part of it, they represent our community. One's a staff member, but also a community member. The other two are definitely community members. And so that we can keep the timeframe. This, I think we all need to understand, we're in a different situation for this interim for July than we are hiring a permanent. And you could go to the argument, well, we may be hiring a permanent, but not really. Because even if it's somebody willing, we're gonna have processes that will go on that will help with that process when we, if, if that opportunity came up to make them a permanent superintendent. So I would suggest that we do something along those lines, because then we don't draw out the process. And, and not that we, we don't want to be hurried, but we want to act quick. And there's a difference between hurrying and quick, and I don't think that's hurried. I mean, that's, that's being somewhat measured. And it's not as ideal, but we're not exactly in an ideal situation either, so.
I, I agree completely. The quicker we get this going and done, the better. I do know that there's staff members still wanting to know how things are gonna shake out next year, so faster we get this done. Now, I would assume the interim has no decision, any of that stuff, because we're still leaving that up to Dr. Morlock.
Right.
And Dan and, and the team over there right now with the unions to figure out. But the faster this person, we can, we know and we get in, you could put onboard them quicker and get their input, maybe if there's decisions that could be, still need to be made. So I'm like, let's get this posted as quickly as possible. I think the work that Kevin, Melissa, and Adam did was fantastic. And I agree, I would, if they're willing to, to do it, I'd love to have them for their advice, because they already have probably a lot of constituents that are contacting them already through the district. I'm assuming that's why they're been in, in the position. So they can really streamline a lot of the information we would get. But remember, at the end of the day, it's the board that decides, so we'll have to ask them for their input. What are you guys hearing? What are you thinking? How do you like this? I think we could make a better decision with that input. But again, it's up to us. It's on us to make the right call, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aligned with what you, you, Phil and Josh just said too. Like, I, I think it'd be great to have Melissa, Kevin, and Adam as part of that, as community members. It, like Krista said, it keeps our community involvement still there, but it keeps it small, because we do, we need to have an air of confidentiality here.
Confidentiality.
Just as a respect to our candidates. And we'll get a good robust candidate, a better robust candidate pool by doing that. But I, I think that would be wonderful if they're willing. Of course, they've already put in a ton of time. If they're willing to do that with us, that'd be great. The other piece is, I think the, the calendar is really good here. It keeps it tight. It keeps us on track. And then, you know, by, by mid-May, we'll hopefully have a, somebody in place that can, like you said, Josh, get onboarded and, and get ready to work for next year. But I'm, I'm one-hundred percent in favor of the, of the, of the calendar here as we've, as we've published it tonight.
Owen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor personally of just having the board. And I don't want to sound like I'm against community involvement whatsoever, but it's, it's the board's decision. There's seven members of the board that do represent the community. And I appreciate the work that, that they've done, but I just, and I also have concerns. I don't know, it sounds like it can work with the executive session. I just don't, I'm not clear what the executive session law allows as far as when you bring other, or community members into that. I thought, and I'll just have to read through, I suppose, and want to clarify that you could have an executive session.
You can. We've, we've done it before.
We have done it before.
Yeah, when OSBA led our search process, community members were in on the executive sessions.
But were they allowed to give input, or were they observers?
No, they gave input, I think. Tom, is that what your recollection is? Yeah, they, they gave input, but it's definitely the board's call at, at the end. And I think that those, the community members were not there when the board deliberated. They were only there for the screening and interviewing.
Yes, I guess my, my opinion, I guess, is just that I'd rather it's not and just have the board take care of the, the process, but that's just my two cents.
I can go either way, either, but we better see if the people in the audience are willing to be part of it. You know, is that something that you'd even be interested in?
Do you mind if I speak to the other?
No, go please, do.
So I'm, I'm honored that our names keep coming up, my name in particular. But I have a daughter getting married in four weeks, so I assured my wife that, that tonight would be it. And when Dan called me.
I told you it's only two nights, so.
He told me this would be two nights, and I said, I can swing that, and was happy to serve, you know? So I would really want to pass the baton. So personally, would normally have interest, be glad to help, serve the community. But in this instance, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say no. And hopefully there'll be others that, if you want to get other community members, that, I could recommend some folks. But yeah, for me, it'd be a no. Thanks.
Completely understand.
Yeah, we appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Melissa? Are you? No?
No, you don't have to.
It's the board's one. You two can ask anything about it.
Kev?
Kev?
So, Adam and I were back here chatting a little bit. And one, one of the things was that even if, like, even if the three of us were totally onboarded and able to, I think there would need to be some others, not, not just Kevin, Melissa, and Adam.
Got it.
That's my feeling. There would need to be some others involved.
Owen, did you hear that? So Melissa is open to it if the board asks and we, and, you know, we, so essentially the board asked her, she's willing to help us. Kevin has just said that it's possible for him, but he would want to entertain more people. Is that correct, Kevin?
Yeah, you know, I'm not talking about a giant group, but I think there would need to be some others, other representatives involved.
Some others representatives is what Kevin is saying.
And I didn't get my opinion yet, but that was, that's part of my concern too, is that if we just appoint these three people, that is leaving out a whole bunch of other people that may be well-qualified and interested and might be opening up a can of worms in terms of, you know, we didn't have an application process. And so I'm, right now, my stuck point is having a process that's well-thought-out and, and, you know, dots all the i's and crosses the t's versus getting this done so we can get the best candidate possible. So that's where I'm.
Well, my thought, my thoughts on, first of all, on the three in particular is because they'd already been obliged and performed admirably, I might add, in the capacity of coming up with the Q and Qs and, and, and proving that and felt representative of the community. Now, having said that, finding that one of the three doesn't, one of the three thinks it probably, probably should be expanded. And if we're gonna have it, then at that point, and we're writing others, it probably should be expanded. Then you get into the whole logistics piece of you've got a, you know, how do I put it? Committees kill progress sometimes. By the time you have all these steps for interim position, and time is of the essence. I respect Darren's and Krista's take on it, that time is, is going and that there's not, you know, there's only X amount of people for X amount of positions, and there's quite a few already. I mean, almost every day you pick up the paper, there's another interim thing that's gonna be out there. In that essence, then, it may seem like a backtrack here, but it, in light of all that, then probably should just keep it to the board going to those, those pieces and so we can keep on something close to this timeline. Because to do anything beyond that, in, in figuring out how we're gonna do it and the process and everything, we've extended out, and, and that's, I'm not sure that's something we want at this point for that position.
Now, hearing what we just heard too, you know, the availability.
Yeah, we've got more information there. And I understand that there's gonna be people that are gonna think we're quick to do this, but sometimes the situation dictates what you have to do. And, and I do believe that we're gonna have a very much, very involved process for our permanent superintendent at that point, and not discounting, this is a very important position for a year. But we've got some seemingly good people helping us along the way there, and.
I'm with you, Phil. I, I'm concerned about the timeline. Now, hearing, you know, we, we had three individuals who were deeply involved in the process, but there's some questions whether all can be involved. I'm concerned that, you know, I don't think we have the time. If we look at our calendar here, if we adopt it, it opens tomorrow, and then by May third, we have it closed. I'm just, I don't, we don't have the process mapped out.
And later on, we'll hear some from Joe, but we haven't even heard anything on the budget. But that whole process is gonna be taking up time.
A lot more time. So do we have enough time to develop a process to add more people? I just, I don't know, and I don't want to derail this. I think this is a good timeline. I think we need to stick to this timeline above all. And we've had a great community involvement with, with, you know, our forum and, and what we did last week and then, and what was brought forth to us tonight, which I think gives us a great guiding kind of principles and what we've heard from our community in that way, when, how many, you know, what, how many? Kevin or Melissa or Adam, is it two hundred?
Two hundred and seventy-six.
Two hundred and seventy-six. We had two hundred and seventy-six surveys. We had several individuals show up and stay for two hours and work hard. I think we have a really good guiding principles and really where, you know, the Q and Qs of what we need for interim superintendent. So I just don't want to derail the timeline. Even though it'd be, in a perfect world, we would, we would, but I just don't think we have the time to do it.
And I feel encouraged by Krista and Darren that there seems to be, you know, and Joe's mentioned this too, that we've got some people that are interested, are well-qualified, so. Hope that proves out.
Tom?
I agree with Phil's logic. I mean, I was like, yeah, have those three join us. And then when it, there was some, it just wasn't working out, so, and applications too. I, I, no, I'm, I've come around and just, let's just, let's just the board do it and move fast, as fast as we can.
Josh?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm in agreeance with the board, but I want to make sure that the public knows. Anything you feel, email me, email us. I read them all. And so, like, if you have concerns, you know, shoot them our way, or things you've heard, and we're candidates, what you're looking for, I'm willing to listen. I mean, I will take the input into consideration, especially this great list that's put together. I mean, that's where I'm at.
Owen, any other thoughts?
No, and thank you. I think the group of you did a, a good job of really putting out kind of what my thinking was. I didn't explain it very well, but, no, so I'm in, I'm in agreement with what I've heard.
Yeah, so to summarize, I think that we would have been mostly comfortable with just having the same three community representatives, but if one of them wasn't available, that totally changed our mind, and we don't, we're not. We're stuck between a rock and a hard place between two competing interests. A, the, you know, community involvement, but B, the timeline, because we're gonna get the best candidate if we move quickly. So I, I hope that that makes sense, and I hope that we're kind of in agreement with that. And, but I do want to say, Phil, too, to your point about having a permanent search. So in, in Woodburn, where I work, the board last year, or excuse me, last school year, we had an interim. And the promise was that there would be a permanent search this coming, this year. Well, the board decided that they weren't gonna get very much fruit out of that permanent search, and they were gonna go with their interim. And there was some community upsettedness, because there wasn't that opportunity. So we don't have to decide right now what our permanent search looks like.
No.
But we need to keep that in mind that we're flex, I think, I think, just to be really clear that at this point, what I'm hearing from everybody is that we're flexible. We're very flexible in terms of if we get a superintendent that wants to stay and, 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 you know, people are generally happy with, that we could consider keeping them. And at the same time, that means that maybe that, that public's participation in a, a permanent search might not come to fruition. Or maybe we have a, a survey.
Yeah, there's all kinds of possibilities open there, so.
Anyway, I just wanted to bring that forward, because I don't want there to be false expectations created, because I think we do have to remain flexible. Yeah, so I just wanted to put that out there. Okay, so what I'm, I, I'm sensing that we are ready to, when it comes to our action item, we feel ready. But if we, we have other additional ideas, we can discuss it when it comes down to the action item. So let's go back then to the qualities and qualifications. So we have the six that came from the process. I, it's been suggested that we just add the four qualifications from our policy, although we really don't need number, number two.
So on the, on the, on the qualifications, not the qualities. The number fours, are we saying, just the way it reads, it says basically, anybody who is, can qualify as long as there's, has success as an educational leader? Like, that's how I read it is, we're saying, well, everybody who, anybody who's been in education and led some form of leadership is a candidate.
Yeah, I, I would say that that's generally a principle.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, but I was thinking, we could even take that part off.
No, I don't want to amend any of the policies.
Because, I mean, the, the suggestion that we're getting here is that we need somebody with experience.
Correct.
And so that's gonna be number one or number two on that list.
Because what I'm saying, if we send this out, and that's how it reads, I just want to make sure that.
Well, we'll sort.
We'll sort it out.
We'll sort accordingly.
Yeah, and if we're, if, if, like Krista said, COSA is willing to rank them for us, that takes care of that situation, right? Like, they'll be able to help us out, and, and I really appreciate that. We did not get that in our OSBA service. We did not get that ranking. And I think that that's something that we were really missing.
So I understand, so we're sending out these four with the six?
Yes.
That they came up with the other night?
Yes, plus Dr. Kay gave us humility and humor as well, so we need to consider that. But let's start with just the qualifications. Are we all good with the qualifications that are in the policy?
Yes, just, just use the four we already have in the history.
All right. Now, humor and humility. Where, how can we, how can, is I, I really think that, that those are important.
It's, it's a great recommendation, but it's made from one person and it's outside the whole committee of what they came through, of Kevin, Melissa, and Adam, so I'm nervous about that. Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? Because they. Because they put that collective group together as a group for us.
I'll just, I'll just take that as input when we're interviewing people.
Yeah, I agree with you.
That's the way I perceive that. I mean, we could all choose to add if we wanted to, but I.
I don't think we deviate from what our communities said for us.
The process was good.
This is good.
Humility was discussed at that forum as well.
Okay, so humility was in there.
Well, it was discussed anyways. It didn't make, didn't end up making the list.
Okay, got it.
One thing, one thing if I might, Jennifer. One thing that wasn't discussed, and I didn't bring it up because I wasn't a participant at the forum, but something that keeps coming to mind, and I don't want to add a whole nother quality, but the quality of truthfulness to me is something that I just want to throw out there as something to consider. And, you know, we've got honesty and we've got integrity and we've got transparency, those words, which to me, certainly truthfulness, but I want to consider adding truthfulness as an explicit quality. And to me, the difference, the difference between honesty, which means not telling lies, whereas truthfulness means actively making known the full truth of the matter. And so I would propose maybe adding practices, transparent, truthful communication with a collaborative decision-making process.
So in bullet point two, it says building morale and trust, but the way Owen's describing it does land a little heavier.
So I'm looking at bullet point four.
Which number are you looking at, Josh?
As far as the qualities, qualifications we got from the community, bullet point number two, it says, you know, building morale and trust in the second line.
Yeah, I'm talking about truthfulness.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, and number four.
And adding truthful right between transparent and communication of bullet point four is what you're thinking.
That makes sense to me.
Yep.
I'm just trying to still figure out where the humility could go. Because I really like that.
I liked it, yes.
Can you, can you, well, can you put that like demonstrates humility and integrity with the history of bringing people together? Would that go there?
Works for me. Maybe integrity and humility.
Either or, either way, that might be an appropriate place to put it.
And I might, I might add, as I was driving home, I've been, I've been hearing this phrase a lot lately. We've been, we've made a lot of good hires these past few years and we're going to lose them. And so I just kind of wondered about, you know, if we could somewhere, maybe on the last bullet point, somewhere add something about, you know, effective collaborative team with variety, varied areas of the, somewhere in there, you put the term utilizes thorough and exhaustive hiring processes to ensure, you know, the best staff. I mean, because.
Was that discussed in the forum?
I don't recall, and it is kind of in here, but I just, it's just something that, you know, occurred to me as I was, you know, woke up the next morning and thinking about things. It doesn't have to be in there, but I know I'm going to be asking that question a lot.
Well, I think that is on the, in the policy.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, all those, all these themes are in there. I just know that, you know, that's something I'm going to be thinking about as I'm looking at this person, you know, and, you know, hi, you know, anyway. I'm satisfied with the list as is.
Okay, are we then in entertaining the idea of adding to number four the word truthful after transparent?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
And then humility after, like it would say, number two would say demonstrates integrity and humility?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Sounds like, I see the thumbs up for Owen. Sounds like we're ready to take action on that then.
Yep.
Next on the agenda, I got eight billion pieces. Okay, calendar. So this is actually a huge thing for us because, huge thing for the district because it represents the second half of our strategy to align our obligations for expenditures with our resources for this school year. So we did approve the TAM the last time we met. And that alone is not enough to align our expenditures with our resources for this school year. And that is why the calendar adjustment is on our agenda tonight. And it includes agreements made with two of our employee associations for furlough days. And so that is why we are at this point. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Joe at this point to introduce the idea of calendar to us so that we can get a full idea of what we are committing to.
Sure, thank you. Chair Treger and members of the board. So as you recall from our presentation from OASBO, Jack Yelson, one of the recommendations that you agreed with and asked me to move forward with was trying to find 1.2 million dollars in this current fiscal year in reduction so as to not carry that over. So after long discussions with both of our employee associations, and I want to pause there and remind you that as we make these furlough choices, these are sacrifices that are being made in terms of take-home pay for every employee, for each one of these groups, in the time that they spend with students and the additional stress. And we'll talk about some of those days, but I think it's important to acknowledge that there, it seems like this is something easy to do. It's not, and there's, there was a short timeline to do that. So the calendar adjustment tonight is a result of trying to find the least damaging days. But I'm going to talk about a couple of them, just so we understand the scope and that we have it on the record. So of those furloughs, we, there are a total of seven for the majority of the folks. Two of those are non-school days and five of those are school days. So if you'll review the calendar, you can see that we've essentially eliminated the last, would be normally the week of school. And some of those are teacher workdays. So that last day now becomes the 7th of June. That's also a half day, so a half day with kids, which is what normally our elementary schools do, secondaries do not, but all schools will be doing that. Normally, when you're trying to shut down a school year, there's a lot of stuff. You've got to put the things away, you've made a mess because you've had, you know, children with you for 170, 180 days and all those pieces. Those all have to get done. Grades have to get in, things have to get put away in half a day instead of in a day and a half, right? Or in two days, what we've had in the past. So there is additional work that has to get done in a shorter amount of time. And so that's important to recognize. Additionally, graduation is on the 6th, which means then the next day is a half day for the 7th. So it's going to be very, very quick at the end of the school year. The other, we have a couple of non-school days as well that come into play there. So we tried to fix those again. Having a school day means we have, you know, all staff on, which increased the number of, the number of dollars that we have available to us to get the furlough. There are some, our administrators will be taking eight days and a few other groups as well. So we've got still a few other things to work out. But the calendar adjustment is the board's purview, the calendar is the board's purview. So that's why we're bringing this forward tonight. These are the days that we've worked with both of our associations and our leadership team to determine what would be the least disruptive. And even though it sounds like it's crazy at the end of the year, it is. And it's a, it's a very short time to do any of this work. So I do want to recognize and appreciate what our employee groups and all of our employees have agreed to do to get us to this place for this year. But that's why we're bringing the calendar forward to you now.
Questions and comments?
Just very grateful to everybody involved. I don't imagine how hard that is to make those decisions for everybody. I'm grateful that it got done, but I know it was an easy.
Same here. I'm really grateful to both of our employee associations for their willingness to work, to work with our district during, during these tough times and just, yeah, to work out and to try to help with the situation, but horribly difficult and not easy. But my sincerest thanks goes out to both of the groups for, for working with our administration on this to, to help, to help get us back on track.
The, the huge amount of sacrifice by all our employees is just, no other word but say overwhelming. And, and there aren't words, there really aren't, that express the gratitude for working, working with the district and to, and make this happen. And I know, and I know there will be a lot of people doing an awful lot of work for no pay to make that clean up and grades get entered and everything get done. So, is appreciated.
Owen, did you want to say anything?
No, thank you.
I will just say again, I think I said it last time, but I'll say it again tonight that I appreciate everybody who came to the table, willing to work together again in a very short timeframe. And that is something that is extremely regrettable that it had to be on the short timeframe because inevitably many of the, you know, this, these cuts were going to happen whether we had a short timeframe or a long timeframe, but we had a short timeframe and that made it infinitely harder. And so thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody who was at the table, willing to put in the work to make the sacrifices. And employees only have two months to spread this reduction of their paycheck out. And that is, everybody's, all people, whether they're represented by a union or not, because we have, we do have folks that aren't. Everybody is, is making this cut. So when I heard that we were, made progress on this, you know, I had tears in my eyes. I won't, I won't bring that to bear right now, but that's, that's where I was at because this was a huge, it was, it was a big deal. And again, regrets, apologies, I'm sorry that it had to be in such a short timeframe. We are working to do better, putting things in place to do better. So, thank you. Ready to take action on this then?
Yep.
Moving on then, we have policy BCE, board committees to consider for revision. And again, that pledge to do better, this is part, one of those pieces that it's been recommended by Dr. Morlock, that we have a standing committee, a standing finance committee made up of three board members who would need to have more intense examination of budget, fund balances, forecasting, those kinds of issues. So this, they would meet more regularly than just the board meetings. We currently don't have the ability to do that because our policy says that we will have no standing committees. So the question before us tonight is, are we going to accept the revised policy that is presented to make, to delay the foundation for a financial, or a financial committee? And we're not deciding on that tonight, but that is like, this is one step in that process. So Dan, did you prepare this for us?
Actually Debbie prepared it.
Okay.
Debbie and Joe prepared it.
Debbie and Joe, can you guys give us an introduction?
A couple of pieces. So I'm glad that you mentioned that before, Chair Treger. So code B, or not code, sorry, policy BCE, you had it that you were not able to have any standing committees. So some of the basic languages that allows you to, it doesn't say you will have, it says you may have. And so that allows you to do that. A reminder that committees do not act outside of the board. They are members of and they cannot have a quorum. That's why we said three, three or fewer. And they can make recommendations or explanations to the board, so they can be tasked with something. In this case, it's a fairly normal process then. We can have, they would meet regularly in between board meetings. You know, as you have seen, school finance is wildly difficult to understand. It's totally different than any kind of financing and budgeting and things. And so the concept is that you have more time to spend learning about those things, asking the deep questions, finding out other information. You have a regular standing meeting that you're, that you're meeting with them. Other committees can also be formed under this policy. So you could have one if you were someday in the future looking at a bond again. You might have a facilities committee that might spend a year before you even got to starting to think about doing a bond. But you can set up different committees that you want to have do specific tasks for a limited time or for a long time. So we've left the policy open to be able to do both those pieces. Some of the parts, you'll see, we, we did some editing and then decided it was probably easier just to put in the all red rather than trying to wordsmith and have the 64 different underlines and highlights and everything else's. And so we took some of these from other policies that we found online, which are part of the OSBA group, right? They have similar policies, so they've all been vetted by legal, things like that. But this allows you to, again, have committees, set them up, spin them down if you don't want them anymore. But your policy didn't allow them in the past. And so this is, instead of having that kind of a piece. You'll also notice that it does talk about committees of the whole. Tonight is actually one of those committees of the whole. So work sessions are considered committees of the whole. So you're sort of doing them anyway. So this kind of policy better reflects your current practice to have work sessions. Some boards only have business meeting at a public, or in a, sorry, work session in the same meeting. But you have two separate meetings. You have one that's normally a business meeting. Tonight, we're mixing both because we have some business that has to get taken care of. But a committee of the whole is essentially a work session. So that's, we've kind of better reflected what you're doing there.
I have a question.
Yes.
Dr. Morlock, and thank you for this, by the way. So I remember, we were wanting to do this so we could have a finance committee. I think that was your words used, like finance, not an, or an ongoing budget committee. The thing about this that makes me curious is with the budget committee, those people are, go through an application process. There's usually a term. How do terms work for standing committees? Because that, I don't see that listed here.
That's no, there is no term. So at the creation of, as when you create one, then you can decide, this is going to be a committee that we're going to run for this year or for this limited duration amount of time. So if you put a limiter in the policy, then you're stuck to that limiter. This way, when you create the committee, you can say, we're going to have the finance committee, right? Because the budget committee is separate. The budget committee are representatives, equal number of board members, and you do that process. And that has a whole other kind of a thing. This is a committee appointed by the chair. So you have interest in who would be on that one, great, we'll make an appointment and then we will run that committee. So you can set the duration or you can set a task. You may have a committee that you want, you want to check the color of the differences in the squirrels versus chipmunks tails. We're going to have a limited committee for two months to do that work, right? I'm using an inane example, but for that reason, you can set a committee to do anything. So in this case, this policy allows you to set a committee and say, for the 24, 25 school year, we'll have a finance committee that will be on a regular basis, such and such. And so the board can set that direction. You can, in our next meeting as well, if you'd like, say, we're going to appoint one to start now and then we'll have a limited duration for this school year or we'll go on to next year. So there are a lot of ways to do that. But it's not a term, it's not an election, it's an appointment to that committee.
And then since it's separate from the budget committee, would it then be unwise to have somebody from the budget committee be a part of that separate finance committee? Or would it be because we get a whole separate, different look, set of eyes?
But this is just board members.
This is within the board.
But for the, like the appointing of the finance committee, because you're going to be the one, right? For this, if we want to have a finance.
It's board members.
It's only board members.
Only three board members.
It's from us, seven.
Oh, so there's no members of the committee for it?
No.
Okay. Thanks for clearing it.
And your, and your budget committee is all of you and then another representative.
Plus seven more.
So there'd be three board members working this ongoing.
Correct. And I, I think it's advantageous to learn as much as you can about it and to have a group that is more focused on getting that report, they get more used to it. When you're in a board meeting and you've got three members who have already seen it and may have, can help you answer the question as well. Because sometimes we don't give you the answer, you're like, well, that's actually not what we talked about, this is what we talked about. So it just gives depth to the understanding of the budget.
Yeah, a different level of discussion at the, at the meetings.
Got you.
Oh, having the advisory members, is that what you're referring to?
Well, if you have three members who have had these intense meetings about the budget.
Yeah.
You're going to have a different conversation at your monthly meeting.
I think Josh was talking about, at the bottom, last paragraph, the board committee may appoint advisory members from staff, student body. may appoint advisory members from staff, student body or community
Ah.
with approval of the board. I think that's what he was referring to.
Well, yeah, so I'm, you know, so
Make it happen.
Cards on the table, I'll lay them down. So I'm a little bit caught off guard, just a little bit because I thought we were including members of the community. Because technically it says here, less than three board members not quorum. Well, we could already be having those conversations now with less than three board members, right? So if we wanted to talk about the budget or anything, as long as it's three members, we're allowed to do so, not violating public meeting law. So I'm just like wrapping my head around a little bit.
I think that this makes it easier to say, okay, for 24, 25, these three members are going to comprise the finance committee. And then we're going to have, those are going to be, um, calendared and minutes have to be included, uh, because that now is a more official kind of thing. And so it does make things a little more complicated, but it's also more focused.
And expectations as well.
That's right. And I don't think we can, I mean, like you said, the advisory piece, um, a few years ago, there was, uh, movement towards bringing some budget committee members in like quarterly to, to kind of revisit things. Um, but that, you know, I think COVID made that go away. Uh, so anyway, I, I, I think that there's opportunity for that. And we're not talking about the finance committee right now. We're just talking about the ability
Yes, correct.
to do it.
Yes.
With the intent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because we want to, we, we are, you know, want to consider that. So, but first we have to lay this foundation.
Change policy first.
First, yeah. Owen.
Yeah, so the one question I had is, I was trying to conceive of a reason why we would have the policy in the first place that said no standing committees. And, I mean, this makes good sense to me that we would amend our policy and allow a standing committee. Um, but is there a contrary argument that anybody has?
No, I was wondering the same thing. Why, why, why did that say no standing committees to begin with?
I would assume the perception of people violating public meeting law first one. But that's, I don't, I can't see a reason outside of that. Or there was a history of maybe three board members that were always getting picked. I'm just, I'm outside of
Or maybe it was just in the sample policy and it was just adopted.
Yeah, that's the one we always had. Yeah, that was the thing.
My guess would be an OSBA recommendation.
Yeah. Start simple. That would probably be the, I can see that being, this, the, I can see that being the standard, starting boilerplate policy to keep it simple and then add things as it goes.
Yeah, cause it definitely complicates things, for sure.
So don't, yeah.
For sure.
Anyway, yeah, that's.
It seems like we're ready to take action
Yeah.
on this.
I don't have any objection to the change.
Okay, so now I think it actually is our time to take action.
Yep.
So we get your, um, motion, motions in order, team. Um, the first action item that we're going to consider is qualities and qualifications for the interim superintendent. We can have a discussion? Or we can just make a motion?
Do we have somewhere those, those six as amended up anywhere or?
So, hold on a second. So I did make, um, adjustments to that.
Thank you.
So just to make sure that I caught this correctly. So if you can see that.
Mm-hmm.
So in the second bullet, added humility. And in the fourth, we added truthful communication.
Can you do a, a comma there? Practice is transparent, comma. Don't, isn't that right? Grammar, people?
Yeah.
I was thinking the same thing.
Comma?
Yeah.
Yeah. Got it.
All right. Does that look good to everybody?
Yep.
Yep.
I'll, I'll move to approve the qualities and communications as recommended by our, um, by our, our community tonight with the edits that has been laid before us.
Yep.
Second.
I'm supposed to read it exactly as it was stated. So I might not, sorry. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the qualities and qualifications for interim superintendent as recommended by the community with edits made, uh, tonight.
Should, what should we be doing about the four that are in our policy, the qualities?
Did you add those, Dan?
They are on here. They were not posted to board book.
But they are now.
Yes.
Okay.
There.
Slid it forward, okay.
Right there.
Okay.
Package deal.
Everybody feel confident in their voting?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Phil?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
All in favor? All right, moving on to the COSA-led interim superintendent search calendar.
I move that we, uh, involve COSA in our search and accepting the calendar that's presented timeline-wise, however.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we involve COSA in our search and accept the calendar presented with the timelines. Any further discussion? Phil?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
All in favor? All right, next on the list is the 2023-24 school year calendar adjustment.
I move that we approve the 23-24 school year calendar adjustment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the 2023-24 school year calendar adjustment. Any discussion?
Yes, with deep regret that we're having to.
Concur. Phil?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
All in favor? And, uh, we have policy BCE board committees.
I move that we adopt policy BCE with the proposed changes regarding board committees.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt, uh, policy BCE with proposed changes regarding board committees. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make a procedural kind of note. Um, you know, usually it's our policy to do three readings for policies.
Oh, thank you.
But it's when they are determined critical by our board, we have the, the freedom to, uh, implement them just with one reading and discussion. Um, it's akin to what we did with our NARCAN policy. We deemed it as, as important to the safety and health of our students. Uh, and we did that on one reading. Uh, we did not do the traditional three readings. So just wanted to make a procedural note on that.
And that's, um,
Yep.
policy BFC. And it says, when in the best interest of the district, immediate adoption of proposed policy is necessary, the board may adopt such policy at the first or second meeting wi- in which it is presented. Any other discussion?
Jennifer, do we need to make a determination as a board that it's in the best interest? Like a separate determination?
We have never done that before, but
Okay.
Yeah, when we did the NARCAN policy, we just adopted it on the first time. And then we'd done some other on second reads and we didn't, we didn't do that. But I think we can say it if right now.
I think we've all just said it and affirmed it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we agree then.
I think we're in agreement that it's in the best interest of the district so that we can make quick progress. Um, all right. So I think we've made the motion. We've seconded it. I've said, we've had discussions, so now it's time to vote. Phil?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
All in favor? I don't have any good of the orders.
We have, we have a superintendent.
Oh.
I mean, if you're tired of hearing from me.
No, I'm not. I'm not. We need, we need your update. I'm sorry. We usually have our updates at the beginning, but I think it was very appropriate that this update
Just wanted to get you through all that first. So
Thank you.
I will make this fairly quick. I realize that it is now, uh, 2,100 hours. Uh, so I wanted to give you a couple of, uh, timeline things to remember. I was glad that you worked through, uh, the superintendent search timeline. And somebody did mention, uh, among the crew there that we've got other things that are happening in parallel. So I want to remind you of some of those dates and then also the things that have to kind of happen in that time. So by June 30th, by law, you have to have some budget submitted to the Department of Education. So June 30th is our deadline. Prior to that, the school board has to adopt a budget for the 24, 25 school year, which means you'll have to have some kind of a meeting before June 30th so we can get that in and get underway. I'm sure Kim would like to have it before that date especially. And before that then, remember you're having budget committee meetings that will go through the process of reviewing the budget, asking the questions, learning the things, and then make a recommendation to the board. The board can choose, uh, to move forward with their budgets. And prior to that, we have to develop the staffing plan and the operational plan based upon, um, hitting our, uh, targets, which was the $8.8 million reduction from the, um, the budget, uh, for next year for the 24, 25, taking into account, uh, these specific items and probably several more. Um, first, we of course have to look for all things that are non-staff reductions across all departments, programs. Uh, we talked a little bit about the schedule changes, bell times, purchasing contracts, any of those other things that we can, that we can look for. We'll consider any of the district's assets, um, that may have significant value to make a dent in the progress of getting to that $8.8 million as well. Um, just kind of for scope to understand, 8.8 is about 12% reduction in expenditures. Okay? So that's 12%. Um, that's year over year from 24, 23, 24 to 24, 25. We'll review all the existing and upcoming service contracts that we have, uh, with folks at outside organizations for any kind of cost savings. Uh, we've been asked, of course, to look at all kinds of things under the sun. We are reviewing them, uh, in parallel as we can. Uh, we'll be gathering staff and community feedback, um, about their priorities. Okay? The things they would like to, uh, retain. Uh, sometimes it's easy when you're angry to say, get rid of this, get rid of that. We actually want to know what the priorities are. What are the things that are most, that you most value? Uh, we will use, um, thought exchange to be able to do that. We'll launch that out, um, probably not tomorrow, the next day. It'll be open approximately a week. Um, I know there's been some concern that people get together and game the system and, you know, all the rest of the stuff. We can only do what we can do. I think you'll see some of the priorities rise to the top. We'll bring that to the board, uh, for your consideration. Cause we will need, um, some direction from you about which rabbits to chase and which ones not to chase. There will be some things that are, we call them in education terms, loose and tight. Some things that, yeah, we can kind of look at those or no, we're not doing those at all. Or we are going to do these, right? So we'll need some direction, uh, from you about which ones that we should be, uh, going after. Uh, so we'll bring those to you. Uh, and then additionally, uh, we, uh, will try to figure out as many of those we can. We'll also be talking about what, um, the levels of reductions in force will look like and the kinds of things that we can reduce those with. So we'll have to be kind of doing all of those in parallel, looking at things that we can reduce that are non-personnel. At the same time, what kind of personnel reductions might we have to make in order to reach that number. Um, we will, uh, then develop the scope and then attempt to staff the, the buildings and the district depending upon what that kind of scope looks like. So that reduction in expenditures, everything that's non-personnel brings down, of course, the number of personnel that we would have to release. Right? So we'd be kind of doing some of those. I know that we've, uh, gathered the information for the board's availability and so we'll be looking at scheduling some additional meetings. Um, even if they're short updates or longer things, we're going to need some more contact so we can get some direction. Um, as you heard earlier, we are at now April 22nd. And so the clock is ticking with each day. We've got to get these out. Um, you know, there's, of course, when you're working in a system and you don't know where you are in terms of, will I have a job or not? There's a lot of anxiety. And so we need to move as quickly as we can to at least tell people the unknown is the hardest part. Uh, I think that's the most difficult question for me to answer with, I don't know yet, because people are worried about those things. They don't know where they are. So we're still continuing to do, uh, as much of this as possible. But we're going to have to get some direction from, uh, you all in the coming days. So we, we'll look at the calendar things, uh, and try to set some dates so we can set those. Even if they, we do the virtually or what have you, they may not be, you know, long drawn out. We will have a, uh, time to bring forward to you the information we get from the community out of the thought exchange, uh, for you to take into consideration as we look at the, the kind of priority things that we'll go into, um, after that. So I'm going to pause there, see if there are any questions.
I just wanted to clarify that thought exchange is a platform
I'm sorry, yes.
for gathering community feedback in case folks didn't know. We, it's been used in the district, um, a few times before.
It actually has two rounds. So there are some suggestions that people make and then you can vote, upvote on people's suggestions, right? So I like that. I like that one. People can go in and do as many as they like. So we'll have a central question, which will talk about what are your, what are your priorities? Um, we will ask for, I'll call it a demographic question. Are you a student? Are you a parent? Are you a caregiver? Are you a staff member? Are you all three? Are you a board member? Are you a community member? Um, they're all anonymous, but that just tells, helps us understand, like, who has, who has participated in the survey.
What timeframe will these surveys be going out?
Um, in the next probably two days, I would guess if, what is it? We're going to hope by Wednesday, that's our, our goal. And then have it open for a week and then be done. Right? You know, after that, it just kind of trails like the long tail and it kind of goes on and on. So, um, we'll get that out.
Is the survey going out specifically on Parent Square? Or is there a way to get, are you wanting feedback from the general public?
It'll go everywhere. Yep.
And how do you propose getting the general?
Well, we'll have to announce it somehow. So we've got Parent Square. We can put it out through our other media channels, um, you know, as many ways as we can.
This might be a good time just to, um, confirm. Like, we've all gotten emails saying, I heard you're going to cut this at this school and please don't do that because, and my response back has always been, you know, we don't have anything in front of us at this point, not a single thing. And so if the board hasn't heard about it, it's probably not a thing yet. Um, and schools, different schools have their own processes that they're going to go through at the school level. Um, and I, I just want to, there, nobody's hiding anything here. That we don't have a plan yet until you bring it to us and we are going to give you feedback. Um, and the public is going to give you feedback through the thought exchange before you develop your final recommendation. And we don't have a timeline for that because there's a lot. I mean, we have a de- a drop dead date, right? But we don't have a for sure this is going to happen by this date yet because it's very complex. Am I capturing that properly?
You're correct. In fact, the, the majority of that list that I just read is actually the list I put out to staff on Friday, um, because of the questions coming in. And, um, all of the rumors are true and untrue. So there's some level of who knows what. We have not made any decisions whatsoever. That's why, and I said earlier that we will be coming to the board to ask for, what's our box? Here are the ones we're going to look at. Here are the ones we're not going to look at. Some of them are just, you know, timeframe, just aren't going to work out. Other ones, um, uh, have a lot of impact. But, um, that, the majority of those things, and that's why I want to get it on the record here in the public, is that these are the things that we're talking about. These are the things we're putting out to people. Um, all those top secret plans to take over the world are unfortunately untrue. Um, I wish I had, um, much better time to create conspiracy things and, um, other things. But we just, we are going as fast and as hard as we can. Uh, and we're also operating a district at the same time that has kids that come every day and people who come to work and, you know, buses and lunches and all the rest of those things. So, um, as soon as we get a timeline, we'll put them out there. We're not holding anything back. Uh, you were frankly CC'd on the same message that went out to the, all the staff at the same time. So, um, we're not, uh, there's not a lot of extra, you know, time to do those things. So we're trying to get it out there as possible. And then we'll send some of this out in Parent Square so people understand, kind of, here's the scope, here's where the timeline is. And as soon as we know more, we'll tell you more. I promise. We, we don't want to hold anything back. Uh, it's enough stress as it is. And we have to, at the same time, find an interim superintendent, um, and get, uh, him or her coached up on what we're doing now and get them in the chair as soon as we can. Okay. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, now.
Now you can.
And I, I don't think that we have anything else good of the order. Uh, appreciate everybody's time and discussion and willingness to dig in tonight. Thank you, audience. Thank you, community members. Thank you, um, the folks who led the process, um, for the qualities and qualifications and all the people who are out there, um, supporting us without, you know, um, asking anything of us. They're just being generous in their, in their help for our district. So we appreciate that. Um, without objection, me adjourned.